Thank you very much. With that, good afternoon to everyone on this day Wednesday, January 2nd. It's 12 at 5:30 our planning commission meeting for this month. Call to me to order first thing of order business roll call please.
Alderman Boyd. Alderman Cone. Commissioner Banton.
Present.
Commissioner Boaz.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley. Commissioner Peoples.
Present.
Commissioner Goodman.
Present.
Commissioner Pfeffer.
Present.
Commissioner Weber.
Present.
Chair Strather.
Present.
And you have a quorum of seven.
All right, thank you, Michelle. As Commissioner Weber did say he wanted to be the first which everybody happy new year. I will be the first to do it officially from the commissioner. Happy new year to all. I pray everybody had a safe and blessed holiday. And whatever fashion you celebrated it and hope your families are safe too. In this crazy covid scenario that we're in. One day we'll get back into the rooms to get to shake hands or at least see each other face to face. With that, the first order of business, we do have the minutes were received, was sent out for the December meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes written or. And if you don't please identify yourself with the motion and second.
Commissioner Weber so move.
Commissioner Pfeffer second.
And call for call for vote please.
Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman.
Aye.
Commissioner Pfeffer.
Aye.
Commissioner Weber.
Aye.
Chair Strather.
Aye.
Motion passes with our present voting aye.
All right, thank you. That means the minutes of December 1st are approved. Really three basic items on the agenda. The first one will be handled by Alexa.
If I could just interrupt you for two seconds to go back to the last slide and just publicly thank you for your time on this special day. And happy birthday to you. Hopefully this will be a smooth meeting and you'll get your evening to celebrate.
Thank you, Cecilia. And you know, you don't you don't you don't listen very well. Thank you.
I think you should, Mr. Chair, I think you should sing.
No, he's supposed to be singing to me, trust me. I'm sorry, this is an official meeting. Can we get back to business at hand? And we won't. My gift will be if Don keeps quiet. How about that?
Oh.
With that, we have three agenda items where the first one will be Alexis, which we've heard before. The second will be Jonathan and the third item is an administrative item which will be presented by Cecilia. We'll go in that order. Commissioner, do you know how we respond to all questions and and votes? So at that point, let's move forward. Alexa, welcome.
Hello, and happy birthday and happy new year to all the rest of the planning commissioners. So as stated, first on the agenda is a redevelopment plan you all have seen at our last planning commission meeting. For the area that's just over an acre in the 22nd ward and within the Mark Twain I 70 industrial neighborhood. The details about the project are the same with the exception of some updated images to demonstrate the site itself. Quickly, I will just summarize this redevelopment plan. At this time, there isn't a proposed developer, but the goal is to be proactive and attractive redevelopers through the area through this tax tax abatement incentive. Next slide, please. The redevelopment slide is located in the business industrial development area. Next slide. Next is an aerial view of the industrial building and on the following slide is another era perspective of the redevelopment area. The following slide after next one. There we go. The following slide will orient you as to the adjacent properties surrounding the site. So here to the east is an industrial building called the House Medal of Exchange. Also, east is a family owned and operated mid states container company. And then west of the building is an office office building and another industrial warehouse. So after review of this request, staff recommends the area to be declared blighted and that the redevelopment plan isn't conformity with the SLU. And we staff recommends approval of the blighting study and the redevelopment plan.
Thank you, Alexa. As most of commissioners remember, the biggest question was the actual location of the building. The last time we heard that. That has been clarified in the in the proposal. I'll do fairly quickly entertain any questions as we do. It'd be first Commissioner Banton and Commissioner Boaz. Any questions, Commissioner Banton?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Probably Commissioner Boaz would be Commissioner Peoples, Commissioner Boaz.
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Peoples, any questions from you?
No, no questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Goodman and then Commissioner Pfeffer. Commissioner Goodman?
No questions.
Commissioner Pfeffer?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Weber?
No questions.
Thank you. Chair has no questions at that. If you Alexa, if you just want to read the recommended recommended action, I will entertain a motion. Please entertain your your name as you motion a second.
So again, after review of this redevelopment request, staff recommends that the area be declared blighted. And that the redevelopment plan isn't conformity with the SLU's business industrial development area. And staff recommends approval of this blighting study and redevelopment plan.
Thank you.
Commissioner Weber moves to accept the staff recommendation.
Do I have a second?
Second, Commissioner Banton.
It's been moved by Commissioner Weber, seconded by Commissioner Banton. Call for vote please.
Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman.
Aye.
Commissioner Pfeffer.
Aye.
Commissioner Weber.
Aye.
Chair Strather.
Aye.
The motion passes with our present voting aye.
All right, thank you very much, Michelle, for that. The next item bit of agenda is Jonathan, who I believe is on site or I'm not sure where Jonathan is.
Actually, the next one is Alexa.
Oh, the next one's Alexa too, okay. Well, I saw yours.
All right. So our next redevelopment plan for review is located in the Van de Venter neighborhood and consists of three parcels just over an acre currently owned by. The developed the prospective developer who is online, which is Ozella Foster. The redevelopment plan is also located in the Ville Historic District and the North Central Plant Area. The prospective developer Foster Foster Funeral Services plans to build a new funeral home facility. With expansion of the facility to also include catering services. Additionally, the site is located in the fourth ward and has received automatic and community support. Next slide, please. As mentioned, the project is located in the North Central Plant Area, which encompasses the Van de Venter and Covenant Blue Grant Center neighborhoods. And one of the main priorities of this plan and a lot of the key strategies were to develop Dr. Martin Luther King into a commercial. Commercially viable mixed use corridor and this project aligns with that. Next slide. The project is located in a neighborhood commercial area which encourages development of new and the rehabilitation of existing commercial uses. That serve adjacent neighborhoods and just to the north of the site, which is it's located in Van de Venter and then north is the Ville neighborhood. Next slide. So here is the site which the project will be located. And then on the following slides, we were able to receive updated renderings and a site plan from the cultural resources office. Who has reviewed and approved of the project under their preliminary review process. So here's a running rendering of the northeast facade of the funeral home. And then next, the site plan shows. You could go, thank you. The site plan shows them how the northern facade of the building faces Dr. Martin Luther King. And then access to park is located at the rear of the building from an entrance on North Sarah Street. So the file this slide specifically depicts how in the future we may again review this project for an alley vacation. Given how the current site plan and you could see where the allocation might occur with the highlighted yellow arrows. And then additionally, if we go to the next slide. We might also see this problem again for the zoning of the rezoning of three parcels. Whereas you can see. One of the parcels is G local commercial district and the other two are F neighborhood commercial district. Okay, next slide. So next I will just walk you through the adjacent. Uses surrounding the redevelopment site. So to the west is the plaza with several small businesses. And then just across the street to the north, there is a pawn shop and then also a tire store. And then as we move along, Dr. Martin Luther King northeast, there's also an auto sale shop. And then also east of the site is a small plaza at the intersection of North Sarah and Dr. Martin Luther King Drive. After the review of the redevelopment plan with conformity to the SLU and other factors, staff recommends that the area be declared blighted. And it does conform with the SLU designation of neighborhood commercial area. And recommends approval of this fighting study and redevelopment plan. We have Ms. Ozella Foster and some of her team members on the line that can answer questions, also Zach with S O D C. And I'm also happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Cecilia. Appreciate that. As many will know during the. Presentation she made lease pawn shop is where retired Commissioner Dunn. Dorn was killed about two years ago now, I think it was. That is the location there. I just happened to very by chance drove by there just recently. And you know, just reminded me of that when I saw that picture. So I keep them in their their families in our prayer. With that, also to preempt any conversation, keep in mind that public hearing will be held at the Board of Aldermen. That will be done in either way in which we pass or not this this recommendation. So that will be done at the Board of Aldermen and at that point, the committee, I'm not sure which committee gets it. So you do you. Or Don know which one will have ownership of that.
I believe it's neighborhoods, but Zach, can you correct me?
That is correct.
Okay, that's where they will schedule public hearing at the appropriate time. So at this moment, we'll go ahead and entertain questions from the commissioners. Again, we'll Commissioner Banton, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of questions. Would you mind going back to the site plan, please? It looked like it was different than the one that we had in our packet.
So this site plan is the most updated one that we were able to receive from the cultural resources office. So the one that you have is a little bit older.
Got it.
So it should be the most updated one.
Okay, first, just a couple of points of clarification. Looking at just Google Maps. There's a alley in the rear of the property which sort of jogs over, but it also doesn't necessarily look like it's maybe even a functioning alley. Is part of this project to looks like to connect the alley actually pave that or is that? Just designating that that's sort of the new alley area.
Can you repeat the question? Were you saying about?
So yeah, sorry, the the existing alley, which sort of looks like it currently jogs up and around. A vacant structure as part of this project looks like it would sort of continue straight all the way to Sarah. Is that the construction of a new alley or is this site plan just indicating that's the area of where a future alley would be?
I will actually divert defer to the developers team for that, just to make sure.
Mike.
So has is Mr. Vance on the line? The civil engineer, this is Mike Kellin, the architect.
No, I am here, yes.
Okay, Clay, I think that one's for you.
So the the proposal would be to vacate that alley in its entirety and not connect it to Sarah.
Got it. And is that a functioning alley currently?
No.
Okay. The other street related question. So Sarah sort of jogs over and there's sort of a triangular wedge piece right there. That's sort of on the very edge of the site plan. And it looks like. Is this project proposing that that segment of street that's currently closed off be turned into green space or what's what's exactly happening there?
We've had some discussions with the street department and. I don't think we have any opposition to making it into green space, but. They're. I don't believe that they have a solid plan for it at this point.
Okay.
From what I can understand, you know, they they need to do some do some. Internal looking at whether or not the Sarah Street continues to jog or whether it actually goes back to accessing straight. There wasn't any any real direction given other than they need to take a look at it.
So that whatever happens there is not part of this project.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So my next question is my understanding that this project is. Sort of been a long time in in the making and always happy to see. Investment development in this part of the city, especially new construction. So my one question though is that MLK drive here. At least the existing buildings excluding that sort of strip mall directly to your to your west is a fairly urban environment. With buildings located zero lot line on the street. This one will have a driveway up front. Can you walk me through that decision making and tell me why? This isn't perhaps a more urban sided building?
So Mike Kellin, the architect here, we worked extensively with the owner to come up with a plan that worked for their operation. I agree that on most urban sites, it would be preferable to have. Close to a zero lot line. So we'd be, you know, continue the street front. But that historic street front no longer exists on that that side of that stretch of Martin Luther King. It's really defined by that strip mall that you mentioned, which is set way back from the street. So. The owner, although what would you know would like to come up with an urban design, decided that it would be best for their operation to sit back a little bit, have a nice green lawn out front that was inviting. Also had room for their their cars, you know, for sessions during funerals to pull up around the building. They decided to make the strategic move to not put too much parking in front of the building. So you wouldn't be looking at cars. So that is somewhat of an urban solution. They came up with to stick most of the cars in the back of the lot where you wouldn't see it. But what they were trying to, I guess, confide with this building and exciting, it's a nice. Warm home for families to come to at their time of need and that that nice welcoming lawn was part of it.
Got it. Thank you for for that history there. And I am glad to hear that the parking and see that the parking is situated behind the building. My last question is. Just related to sidewalks. I don't see any. Indicated other than, you know, a sort of short little bit going from the front entry directly to the street. Is it the plan to construct new sidewalks as part of this product along MLK as well as Sarah Street?
Clay, I'll defer to you on that. I don't know if you you have information on that.
I. I think there's a decent sidewalk on MLK right now. Mm hmm. And then there's a there's also the sidewalk that wraps around. And comes back up Sarah Street. We would we would we would repair whatever needs to be repaired, but I. You know, I'm not, I'm not thinking that new sidewalks are gonna are needed along MLK because I think they're new. I mean, I think they're in good shape.
Got it. Just they weren't indicated on the site plan. So just double checking. Okay, no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banton. I'm going to ask it's listen. Thank you, Chris, Mr. Jones, you just muted. With that, Commissioner Boaz, any questions at this point?
Nope, no additional questions.
Okay, Commissioner Peoples, any questions?
No question.
You Commissioner Goodman, any questions?
No question.
Commissioner Pfeffer, any questions?
Just a quick one. I know there were evolving conversations around this project. Including an event space for families. And I was just wondering if anyone here could speak to that a little bit.
I would think Ms. Foster would be the best to speak to that. Ms. Foster, what do you think?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, hello, everybody. We our challenge was to get that done. Well, the funds were not there for us to basically go ahead and add that. Community room which would supply an area for our families to have a repass afterwards. As well as the community to be able to use the room. But we could not, we could not get the funds that will basically let us add to it. So we were kind of tied right there. It was my goal to basically address that issue with the city, but at this point, we we don't have the funds to make that. Add that part on to this building.
And and Ms. Foster, can you identify who you are and who you're with and your place?
Sorry.
Can you?
I am Ozella J. Foster Robinson, owner of Ozella J. Foster Funeral Services. Christopher Jones is my son and we just happen to be on his laptop.
Thank you. I just wanted I needed to have it for the record and other commissioners know who you are. Many of us are very aware of your work in the city and we thank you for that.
I've actually been approached by. The the new St. Louis Development Corporation person, Mr. Neal. And one of the questions was he did ask us, wouldn't it be cheaper if we could make that happen? Yes, it would be cheaper. But at this point. That's not going to be feasible financially.
Okay, all right.
Now, let's see, I want to just hand us out the money.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I'm really excited to hear the project that I do think has been in the pipeline for about seven years. It is finally moving forward and I'm confident that as it grows and becomes a reality that the vision for that community space can also come online in time.
And we thank you for that. We we're confident as well, but based upon the fact, yes, we have been dealing with it for a little while and I'm actually grateful to. St. Louis community for basically helping us and go ahead and make this done. And the challenges of dealing with the various different banks was it. L R A was very instrumental in us basically getting the type of property that we need there. So I'm I'm honored. And I thank St. Louis City for allowing us to basically be stationed in that fourth ward right there. However, we knew nothing about the Van de Venter. I didn't even know it was a Van de Venter neighborhood. So so my question is. When you're doing the development, do we have to answer to two? Of Alderman, the fourth ward and miss the 18th ward people? What do we do?
I will defer that question to either Don or Cecilia.
The process you're going through, Ms. Foster, is I'm sorry, I'm being told I'm a little quiet. The process you're going through is a process that starts with the St. Louis Development Corporation and. Comes through the planning commission and goes to the Board of Aldermen. So you know, usually that does get introduced by the alderman who's who's you're situated, whose board you're situated in. They'll introduce that, but our process is kind of independent of their work. It starts at St. Louis Development Corporation. It comes to us, we review it. And then it goes to the Board of Aldermen. Anything related to the way that the alderman functions is not something that we are generally interfering with. So our review is on any adopted plans and goes from there. And then there's also public review at the Board of Aldermen as well. So. Sometimes it gets introduced, it can be introduced by any alderman, but typically it is introduced by the alderman whose ward you're located in. I hope that helps clear up the the question a little bit.
You you did because I think we're in the fourth board and I just learned, I think this week. Across the street doesn't from where we will be does not affect us. I think the ward 18th ward start. On the south side of Evans, whereas we're on the north side of Evans.
And Ms. Foster, this is Don Rowe. Zach, who made a few moments ago, some comments is with L C R A and S O D C. And he will be shepherding it through to the Board of Aldermen and with the right sponsor, and that's the next step. All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I believe I was in calling on Commissioner Peoples for questions. I'm not sure if I got to you or not.
No questions.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Goodman.
No questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Pfeffer.
No questions.
Okay, and if I if I backtrack, please forgive me. Commissioner Weber?
No questions, sir.
Okay, thank you. The chair does have one structural question. I notice it looks like the only entrance to the parking lot is on the east side. Is that correct?
Mr. Vance, I'll leave you to answer that one, please.
At this point, yes, sir.
Okay, so there is no west entrance to that lot or south entrance to the lot. I we don't look at plans here, but I would consider that a very. So. All right, thank you very much. With that. Let's oh, the end of this is in fourth war. We do have a support from Alderman Evans and the product's listed as 66 50 square foot. And a cost of projected 1.5 million that I'm looking at on the present. So so I mean, I'm sorry, Alexa, would you go ahead and make the. Review the recommendation, please?
So after review of this redevelopment plan. Staff does recommend that the area be declared blighted and conforms with the SLU's designation of neighborhood commercial area. And staff recommends approval of this lighting study and redevelopment plan.
Okay, with that, again, I will entertain a motion one way or the other, up or down, and if you'd identify yourself in a second.
Commissioner Boaz move to approve.
Commissioner Weber second.
Commissioner Peoples second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Boyer, seconded by Commissioner Webb originally. Call for vote.
Commissioner Banton. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Previous role.
I was gonna say previous role.
I I hear a call for objection. I hear objection. With that, call for vote, please.
Commissioner Banton.
Present. Which is my vote, not that I'm here.
Okay. Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman.
Aye.
Commissioner Pfeffer.
Aye.
Commissioner Weber.
Aye.
Chair Strather.
Aye.
You have six eyes and one present.
David, can you verify for me where that stands with? With Commissioner Banton's vote?
That that will be reflected as an extension.
Okay, all right. With that, then we have six eyes and one extension. Does that pass the vote appropriately?
Yes, and the motion passes with six eyes and one extension.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, it will go forward to the Board of Aldermen. And the Board of Aldermen at that time will be scheduling any public discussion needed for this event. Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. One thing is we're looking at the street frontage and. Jake noticed that there's a a more modern building than traditionally along Martin Luther King, maybe to the west. And it is a. A building that was constructed by the Cook School of Business at SLU. As a entrepreneurial incubator. And so. It was an added thing to the neighborhood with the Cook School sponsoring to help. Both mature and provide space for area entrepreneurs. So. Just a little context. Thank you, Don. Always good for a little content context. With that, the third item is administrative item, and I believe this is going to be Cecilia who's hiding in the door. Or no, I see Jonathan, I see Jonathan coming up.
I'm here in the building.
Oh, Cecilia, I'm gonna get you.
Sorry about the chair. So we have the three action, well, the four action items, including this is the last. Plan for consideration than the administrative item that Cecilia has. Good evening, Chair and planning commissioners and happy birthday, Chair. I am Jonathan Roper. Jonathan Roper, Senior Planner with the Planning and Urban Design Agency. The item I present for your consideration is a redevelopment plan for the West Forest scent, De Soto Avenue. East Warnie area and the College Hill neighborhood. The project is located in the 21st ward and has support from the alderperson. The 61 acre area spanning 11 blocks consists of vacant lots. Occupied and vacant residential, commercial and institutional uses. The area was found blighted by a separate ordinance, ordinance number 71417. Thus, the request this evening is for consideration of a redevelopment plan only. Thus, the request this evening is for consideration of a redevelopment plan only. There is no prospective developer at this time. The objectives of the redevelopment plan are to facilitate commercial and a mix of uses along West Florissant Avenue. And to facilitate residential development throughout the area by utilizing micro and sub developers. Next slide. There are four strategic land use designations in this area. The majority, as shown in orange, is designated neighborhood development area. And this area seeks new residential and development and corner commercial services that services the neighborhood. The commercial uses, as shown in pink and purple at the bottom of the redevelopment area, are clustered along the major thoroughfare of West Florissant Avenue, where the slough designations consist of a mix of neighborhood commercial area, opportunity area and neighborhood development area. Furthermore, nearby O'Fallon Park near the top, the yellow parcels are designated neighborhood preservation area. And a few scattered parcels throughout the site are designated institutional preservation and development area. Next slide. And here is an illustration with the aforementioned slough designations transposed over. The slough designations are reflected in the redevelopment plan as the objectives are to facilitate a mix of uses and commercial development along West Florissant, as you see in the pink and purple slough designations and more residential development throughout, where you can kind of see in the orange transposed area. Next slide. And here is an overview of the redevelopment area outlined in blue. The following slides will orient you to the properties found within this redevelopment area, starting at the southeast area, as you see with the star. Here in the southeast area exists vacant land and commercial buildings along West Florissant and residential uses along or nearby De Soto Avenue, which is the eastern boundary on the right. Next slide. And the southwest area, along the southern boundary of West Florissant Avenue, exists vacant land and commercial structures. Along Warren Avenue, the western boundary to the left, there's more vacant land, occupied and unoccupied residential. Traveling north along Warren, there are several scattered vacant sites. Also occupied and unoccupied residential structures. Next slide. Going to more the center of the redevelopment area, there's a former school building. Next slide. Along the eastern boundary of De Soto Avenue, there are scattered vacant lands, sites, occupied and unoccupied residential structures. Next slide. And I will note that Zach with SLDC is here to just answer any questions that you might have that I cannot answer about the redevelopment plan. But at this time, it's previously seen mentioned, the area has already been blighted. And upon review of the request, staff finds the proposed redevelopment plan for the West Florissant, De Soto, East Warreni area in conformity with the slough and recommends approval of the redevelopment plan. Happy to take any questions or comments that the commission may have at this time.
Thank you, Jonathan. I do see that Alderman Cohen has joined us. I'm not sure. I'll first entertain any questions that he may have, if any.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't believe I have any questions at this time. A quick comment, I believe it is your birthday, so happy birthday and thank you for being here tonight.
Alderman Cohen, thank you. You never fail to make me happy. Commissioner Benson, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boas?
No questions. Glad to see this happening.
Thank you. Commissioner Peoples?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Goodman?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Pfeffer?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Weber?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Could you go back to the outline of the area, please? Keep going. Okay, that's good. This may be, maybe it's been answered before, but I'm curious why the area, unless there's commercial or something, why it just doesn't go all the way? I don't understand the jog in the back.
Right, or the mouse is right now. I'll just note that is a different ward. So this redevelopment area is all contained within one ward within one neighborhood. So that's probably most likely the reason for that.
Well, okay, thank you for that. That makes sense to me. But however, wouldn't we have a better chance of getting a developer if the parcel were not jabbed like that?
Zach Wilson is also on the line and maybe able to help with the origins of the request.
Yes, Zach Wilson with SLDC. This is the twenty, Alderman Muhammad requested this chapter ninety-nine to proceed. Yeah, it would make sense to do a complete neighborhood plan, but that, that was not our choice to move forward with this, this plan, like the way it is. But it does take in quite a bit of College Hill and a lot of vacant land that would be, will be marketed with our new SLDC department that breaks up the city into multiple groups. And our project managers, those areas will be marking these areas here in the future, and that's just starting next month or two. Or longer, maybe four or five months, actually. But this, I under, it makes perfect sense. It should be a complete neighborhood plan, but at this moment, the Alderman of the twenty-first ward is the only one supporting this currently.
I appreciate the answer, and your answer makes sense. However, who's gonna come back and try to develop that area? Don't we have any kind of recommendation we can make to the alderman to see if he would talk to the other alderman and let's get a big parcel? So we don't have to fight fifteen years from now because somebody wants to put something in there that the alderman in the twenty-first doesn't want around this development. I, I, I guess perhaps we have no leverage, but I'm expressing my opinion that I think even you said it, Zach, that you guys would rather have one large development. I'm, I'm just curious why we can't
This plan does not change the zoning, doesn't change the use of, in this area. This plan allows for tax abatement, and that tax abatement will be marketed so developers can come in to develop this land. We're not asking to change, this is a quite a large area, so
I agree.
If this gets moving and gets developed, we've done similar things like this in the West End neighborhood, the Gate District in South City. And Alderman Muhammad has done this in other parts of his ward. We've passed one recently just north of Natural Bridge, north of Fairgrounds Park. That will be a market, well, Tabernacle Community CDC will be working on that. But we're slowly chipping away at block by block for development. So if this area gets developed, we can always work with the future alderman of this area to, to blight and create development areas nearby the, nearby this, or as adjacent to this, so.
Thanks, Matt. I appreciate your answer. I just wanted noted that I think it's it, it's just stops progress. Because one person decides that's all they want, and we can't work together to, to make the site better, as you guys have recommended, that you would like a bigger site. So that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So I'll, I'll, I'll pipe in with a little bit of experience in this matter. Yeah, so Zach, I'm gonna come back to you for you to explain one thing. We're often faced with developers only coming in with parcels that they own and asking for something very specific.
Okay.
This is a large geography with no yet designated developer with some common characteristics that were evident in the aerial photographs, that there's quite a bit of vacant land in this, this particular section of this neighborhood and in this ward. And I've actually walked, it was over a year ago, part of this area with a young woman, ex-patriot from the neighborhood that had been attracted back and talking with the alderman to try to generate some buzz for this area, partly because of the degree of vacancy for this specific site. If you look up closer to O'Fallon Park, that's another sort of odd shape that's not included in this. The density gets to be greater, and it's actually, if you drive along the perimeter of the park and look at this part of the neighborhood, is a very stable part of the neighborhood. So yes, it's sort of both. It's not the complete neighborhood in one chapter ninety-nine, but it is larger than just a couple parcels owned, owned by a developer, currently owned by a developer. And that's an opportunity. And Zach, if you would explain the opportunity in what LCRA role will be, once it's, it's passed the Board of Aldermen in terms of soliciting developers.
The next steps would be creating an RFP, then we will market that to developers, home builders, home rehabbers. Other developers have done work in other parts of the city. Since this is College Hill, we're requesting this plan have the maximum of tax abatement that you can get, would be up to twenty-five years. Now, each project would be scored, and it doesn't mean that everyone who does work inside this area would qualify for twenty-five years, but that's what you could obtain if you scored, scored a good score on our scorecard. But you could, and that with that tax abatement, we would encourage home builders to, to sell to owner occupied houses, which we've seen with such as Habitat for Hum- Humanity, other groups like that have moved, have used tax abatement and other things along those lines. So no words, go ahead.
No, I didn't mean to interrupt you, sorry.
No, this is, this is, for example, West End has had dozens of developers use this similar tool. Gate District has used dozens of tools. I know Alderman Cohen has passed one in the past. He hasn't had as great of increase in development as he wished, but we've had smaller groups chimed in. Saint Joseph Housing has been using it quite a bit and hopefully use it more. But it opens the door for, not only for developers, but owner occupied owners to redevelopment their houses and apply for tax payment also.
I appreciate your comments, and Don, you're educating me. I appreciate that. If my questions will not affect my vote, I'm gonna vote for it. I just want to point out that as somebody that's not really familiar with development, it seemed, it seemed a little odd, and I just wanted it on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cohen, did you want to, you, I believe you were gonna make a statement. You're open too.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I've actually passed a couple of these in my ward. I've had very little traction with respect to developers utilizing it. This is just another tool in the toolbox for, you know, alderpeople, residents, neighborhood organizations to be able to use as an opportunity to promote development or encourage development. But, you know, without developers actually, you know, looking at the tool or SLDC promoting it and, you know, pushing development into North St. Louis and Southeast City, you know, it, it's just, it's a tool that is underutilized in those parts of the city.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman Cohen. My question simply for you, Jonathan, is currently, obviously, this, it's coded under neighborhood preservation institution. There's multiple codes for those areas. If I'm correct, when a developer comes in, then we would make the appropriate concerns for the, for coding in that area? Because obviously, you know, it's a mixed use right now in different, it looks like one, two, five different uses?
So currently, there are, I believe there's four. The redevelopment plan does state in its objectives, it does note, which does follow the slough, that more commercial type development would be along West Florissant, which is at the bottom of the pink there. So that's West Florissant. So the objectives of the redevelopment plan are clear on that, to put commercial there and anywhere else more so residential. In terms of either A, the zoning, or B, the slough, it follows this as well. So if a developer wanted to come in, I'm just gonna say in anywhere, like, let's say the orange or the yellow, and wanted to do something more heavily commercial, they would then, they would need to go through a slough amendment or rezoning and follow those type of procedures. But at this point, that's not being considered.
Okay, because we need the developer in first before we make the changes. Before there's a request to make changes, I understand. With that, can you go over the recommendation from the staff again, please?
Well, thank you. In summary, staff finds a review of the redevelopment plan for the West Florissant, De Soto, East Warreni plan. We find that in conformity with the slough, and staff recommends approval of redevelopment.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion up or down, and please state your name and a second.
Commissioner Weber, I move to accept the recommendation of staff.
Second, Alderman Cohen.
It's been moved by Commissioner Weber, seconded by Commissioner Cohen. Call for vote, please.
Alderman Cohen?
Aye.
Commissioner Banton?
Aye.
Commissioner Boas?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman?
Aye.
Commissioner Pfeffer?
Aye.
Commissioner Weber?
Aye.
Chair Strather?
Aye.
And the motion passed with our present voting, aye.
Thank you very much. With that, there's one more item, which now I believe is Cecilia's turn.
You got it. Good, good evening, Commissioners. This is the last action item that we have for you this evening. You all probably remember the neighborhood planning strategy, which is kind of, we've taken you through different iterations. Can you hear me now? Okay? We've taken you through different iterations of that strategy, so you've been informed of the different times that it's been developed and revised. As a refresher, there are three parts to that report. The first part is looking at best practices and a history of planning in St. Louis. The second part is a summary of stakeholder discussions that we've had. And the third and final part is a more detailed description of how the neighborhood planning initiative is gonna be unrolled. So within that last piece, we discussed the planning process. We talk about how we're gonna engage the residents and the community at large, the various roles that residents will be able to have in the processes, and then we dive into what the metrics should be and how we should prioritize neighborhood planning areas. So this report as a whole, again, that you've seen a number of times, was developed internally and was taken to a number of neighborhood groups and civic organizations for input. So a lot of that included discussions around prioritization. Now that we've had a lot of those discussions, we're bringing it to you just to solidify our actual priorities in neighborhoods. So if you go to the next slide, you may remember that the report outlines twelve neighborhood level metrics that fall under four categories. Momentum, change, economy, and health and mobility. If we go to the next slide. In addition to neighborhood level data, other metrics that we have considered for these prioritizations are health disparities, school closures, neighborhood capacity, and ARPA qualified census tracts, which are gonna be key and important for implementation. So staff has put together a detailed story map, and I'm gonna ask Scott if he could just go to that real quick. I know you pulled it up for me. We're gonna do a little bit of back and forth. But I just want to show it to you. There's a lot of information. I highly recommend and request that everyone just takes a look at it. When you have time, it is linked on our website, stlouis-mo.gov/planning, under neighborhood priorities. under Neighborhood Priorities. So if you just kind of scroll through a little bit, we dive into each of the data points and its relevance to planning and why it's important that we consider these metrics in, in our prioritization. So please do take some time to look at it. It is, has been a really big project for our research staff. A lot of time and energy has gone into this and making sure that we're using best practices and data. And so we're excited that with all of this information, if you go ahead and go back to the presentation. We are bringing you the next slide, the first six planning areas that have been prioritized and informed by this data. So in no particular area, one of the clusters includes the neighborhoods around NGA, Jeff Vanderloo, St. Louis Place, Old North, Carr Square, Columbus Square, and Hyde Park. Another cluster includes College Hill and Fairground Neighborhood. Another cluster includes the Ville, the Greater Ville, and Kingsway East. A fourth cluster being Wells Goodfellow, Kingsway West, and Hamilton Heights. A fifth cluster includes Walnut Park West, Walnut Park East, and Mark Twain. And a final cluster being North Point and Baden. Go to the next slide that it's just a list of the neighborhoods that I just showed you on the map. We go to the final slide. We would like to retain the flexibility to consider circumstances when we're ready to embark on the next set of planning areas, which is why we're only bringing you the first six. We do have the resources to hire folks for these first six planning areas. But it would cover, but these six planning areas would cover a total of 19 out of the 79 neighborhoods within St. Louis for this first tranche. So we're really excited about that. PDA staff has established these prioritizations and metrics informed by best practices and resident and stakeholder input. We've developed the strategy and grouped neighborhoods into planning areas, again, informed by best practices and refined with community input. And we've created a story map with the metrics showing these data points and how they've informed the prioritization. So with all of that information, I'm happy to take questions. We're requesting that the Commission adopt the first six of 31 planning areas to receive these neighborhood planning resources.
Thank you, Cecilia. What I'll do, if Commissioners will just identify through the app, if they want to have questions without going through a roll, I do see Commissioner Banton's hand, then I'll call Commissioner Shane following that.
That, that was just an applause hand, not a question hand.
All right.
But thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Banton, we just knew what it was. Alderman Shane, please go ahead. You're still muted out.
Yeah, I know, my phone keeps moving it around on me. Cecilia, I'm, I'm just curious because I have had a lot of colleagues inquire about this process and, and, you know, plan and whatnot. And I'm just curious, how many alder people have reached out to you in the last few months to, you know, get more information about this?
Not a ton. We have interacted with some Aldermen in neighborhood organization meetings that we've been to and spoken at, but directly I have not gotten a lot of inquiries.
Okay. So I think part of it was also confusion around how neighborhoods were clustered with one another. Can you maybe, since this is a public meeting and people have the benefit of watching it in the future, can you maybe expound upon how those clusters were determined and, and whatnot?
Yeah, so the first, the first kind of time that we put out a map clustering neighborhoods together, we received a lot of feedback and really a couple of concerns more around making sure that each neighborhood still has its own identity within the planning process. And so we made sure that we took that information and made it clear. And we also changed the language away from being planning clusters to planning areas. So basically, each, each planning area, each of the neighborhoods within a planning area will receive its own planning process with a lot of overlap in discussions around transportation and things that really overlap the different neighborhoods and how they interact. But each neighborhood would retain its own planning process and its own plan and identity in the long run. We understand that there was a lot of feedback around which neighborhoods wanted to be paired up with others. And we tried our best to do a lot of kind of scenarios and look at the different possibilities. And we did end up switching some things up, but ultimately it's, it's, it's impossible for everyone to be happy. And the goal is really that each neighborhood has its own plan. So we're not going to be, you know, making neighborhoods retain that planning area in, in sort of the bigger picture sense. They're, they're each going to be individually looked at and reviewed and discussed. I hope that helps a little bit. I should mention, the first iteration also was looked at from the perspective of finding, you know, corridors, bridging corridors together, finding common assets and between neighborhoods or common housing typologies or pairing neighborhoods sort of with, with more momentum with those who maybe had less momentum to try and build on assets. So we, it kind of depended on the situation.
Great. And to that last point, can you maybe expound upon like the process for how these are going to get done? Like the order in which they're going to get done? Because, you know, I've, I've experienced over my, you know, dozen plus years in public service that the neighborhoods that, you know, have the momentum, that have the activity are generally the ones that get the attention versus, you know, neighborhoods maybe in, you know, deep North St. Louis or, you know, Southeast City. So can you maybe expound upon, you know, what the process will be in terms of the order that these will happen?
Yeah, so the priorities are exactly what I've kind of outlined to you in this presentation and are in the strategy. We've looked at 12 different neighborhood level metrics and around momentum is one of the categories, but also around health and mobility, around economic factors. So which areas are seeing significant change, trying to harness that change for good or make sure that any negative change can be halted and turned into positive change. So we've kind of compounded all of the data points and come up with the first six. And that's exactly what we're asking you to approve tonight. So Scott, if you could go back a couple of slides to the map, these are the first 19 neighborhoods that would receive these resources. I would note that we have, we have the ability to hire staff for one, one staff person per neighborhood planning area. So our hope is to be able to use the approval of this to, to, you know, start, we'll continue to seek staff and be able to staff those planning areas soon. And then from a larger perspective, we'd like to find, you know, synergies and possibly in the future be looking to do more than six planning areas at once, depending on how the first six go.
Sure. So when you say that we're hiring staff for each of the planning areas, we'll have six additional staff members in PDA that'll be working on this?
Alexa and Jonathan are both neighborhood planners, so they will be deployed in one of these planning areas each. And we have additional funding through EcoDevo and through ARPA funding that's recently been allocated for us to, to do this as well. So we're going to be using that fund to accelerate the work.
Okay, so but ARPA is not an ongoing source of funding as well. So as we look towards the other planning areas in the future, how are we going to manage that then?
ARPA is not, we're using that to accelerate this work, but Eco, the EcoDevo funding is. And so we will be able to continue this work regardless of, of the ARPA funding.
Okay. Okay, I think those were my main concerns, questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Shane. Any other questions? I'm seeing none by hands of the Commissioners at this point. So you want to read your, your request, your requested action?
Sure. PDA staff has established and prioritized metrics. We've developed a strategy and grouped neighborhoods and we've created a story map with metrics that have informed our prioritization. And we are requesting that the Planning Commission adopt the first six of 31 planning areas to receive neighborhood planning resources.
Okay, I would.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the first six of 31 planning areas to receive neighborhood planning resources.
Commissioner, my second.
It's been moved by Commissioner, by Alderman Shane, seconded by Commissioner Boas. Call for vote.
Alderman Cone.
Previous roll, can we do previous roll?
Call for previous roll, hearing any objections? Hearing no objections, the previous roll accepts the recommendation and passes the motion. Thank you, Alderman Cone. With that, Don or Cecilia, any other actions? Because I do have one line of new business, so.
So I will. One, again, happy birthday, Earl. And as you just saw that presentation from Cecilia, and you've come to meet Jonathan and Alexa, and you know the work that we were doing before COVID with all the best practices and the story maps and going out to the neighborhoods. As you just witnessed, Cecilia, handle all those questions, make the presentations, reflect on things that we heard during our times out there in the community. I just want to say frankly and openly, Cecilia, you did a stellar job. And as we look at ourselves and know how we've looked at other communities, we're becoming a best practice in doing this. And Cecilia, as you may know, has a title in our agency as City Planning Executive. And that's indeed true, the embodiment of how she does her work. And we're, we're very, very pleased to have her and excited about her enthusiasm and depth and the able to assemble the team. And pretty terrific. So I want to do a round of applause for that.
Thank you. And there's other congratulations in the, in the chat box. With that, thank you again to your staff, Don, Cecilia, you and Alexis and Jonathan, you all do a stellar job. And Michelle, you are included in that. And David, you too, thank you for keeping us on point. My honor, new business is really this first to say thank you to each of you that has taken a moment just to say happy birthday. Cecilia, you are charged with giving me a birthday lift to every staff member and Commissioner member because I am not going to share this glory by myself. So others can, Don has a birthday coming up very soon too. Don, when is yours?
Mine is the same as no else.
January 19th.
Is when?
January 19th, next week.
So to both of you, happy pre-birthday.
And the other thing, just while we're, we're thinking about this, as, as we're birthing and doing the neighborhood planning effort, oh gee, bad segue. There are some new staff members that have joined us, have joined us. They're in the wings in tonight's meeting, but you will start to see them making presentations that future Planning Commission needs, so.
That was the worst transition I ever heard.
Hey, I'm recovering from COVID. I managed to get COVID during the holidays.
Well, I hope you're recovering well. With that, I'll let it to any, any other questions, statements, or if information needed to be brought forward.
Just a quick note to echo the, the congratulations and thank yous to, to the Planning Department as well. These neighborhood plans will really serve as the foundation of building blocks for our community-driven and equitable development strategy. So excited to see how this grows.
And all of you, I appreciate your support as a chairman. Also, Cecilia.
Move to adjourn.
So move, it's been moved, seconded, meeting, meeting closed, but so you're still challenged with that. I want list, I want the list of names and birthdays. Everybody have a good evening.
Thank you. You too, birthday boy.
Happy birthday, Earl.
Happy birthday.